Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call please.
Poland here. Hofstetter.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Khan.
Here.
Hafi.
Here.
Sheemaker.
May we have motion excuse Bob from tonight's meeting?
I so move.
Second.
Hafi.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I believe we have some visitors wish to address council. So why don't we just start with you man, we'll just go right to your left.
Hi, I'm Karen Gott. I live in the Homebrewing and Water Conservation District. I was asked if I could have a little moment to update the council on the status of our log jam removal program. Last summer, John Larson and Michelle Wood, who came to you guys to let you know about some proposed projects and also to ask for your support in attempting a sweep of the Millersburg to Kilbuck section of the Kilbuck in order to start working on its recreational usability. They're no longer with the office, so I am doing my best to pick up the ball and go with it. So this is something that I have been helping them with though, and that's our office committed to. So I'm definitely willing to take any questions that you might have. I'm gonna pass out a little handout that will be a reference for you in order to keep you apprised as to the major bullet points or the status of the log jam projects. There's a little map on the back. So just looking through here, the biggest item of note, well, the first item to discuss was just the removal of the very large log jam behind the Walmart. And that was removed in late November of last year. And that's been monitored a little over the last year. Nothing new was accumulating in that area. So it looks like that process to deal with that project worked. It was funded through Miss Kingdom Watershed Conservancy. It was done by a local contractor who gave us a very, very competitive bid. He was very generous and did it for a minimal amount of funding. The problem with attempting to fund more projects through Miss Kingdom is that they have a $20,000 per project cap. And so larger sections of projects need to be either broken down into $20,000 projects in order to keep working through this program. Or as you'll see, Bullet Point number five references the Appalachian Community Grant Program that Holmes County and Consortium of Local Agencies are working on for an application. Would help with, you know, homeswelling waters vested projects would be looking at a clean sweep of the Holmes County's portion of the Kilbuck Creek. And so that would be from county line road down to past Kilbuck. There's potential even, I would like to be crossing county lines and working with Kershawton County because that's going to be better for, you know, the whole river system. Not just the recreational users, but the flooding and just overall management. But that's, that's a little wishful thinking at this point. What we know we can tackle is the Holmes County portion. So that seems to be probably the likeliest of the funding for a clean sweep type project and a maintenance program. In the meantime, we are still attempting to go forward with smaller projects. We have proposals from the River Rangers, which is a group who works within the river in order to mitigate the hazards for recreational users. The really shining reason why you might want to go with that route is that alleviates the need to go through Army Corps and EPA permitting processes, which you might need in order, if you were just gonna take a trap code down to the river, scoop it out. And, you know, then you have to deal with all that debris that is a huge junk pile that nobody wants to deal with. With transportation costs and fuel, it's going to be even harder to get competitive bids to go that route, you know, to have somebody take the time. It also can severely impact your riparian areas, causing, opening some areas up for erosion. The methods proposed by the River Rangers to do the work from boats in the water is very effective. It's just not necessarily very quick. And so we did see one project that was adjacent to the pedestrian bridge down at the Trail Depot. They tackled that very quickly this fall. The Holmes County Commissioners funded a small project for them to tackle that hazard and then also to do some scouting between the county line road and then all the way down to Kilbuck again. So that's where the map that has the bullet points or the points located on that, the hazard areas. So that's the quick and dirty. Does anybody need any more details? Any other interest?
Thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Please get in touch if you do have more of the people on call.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add in quickly after the Walmart log jam was removed. We don't believe it was coincidence, but the next storm event, two of our trouble areas weren't a trouble spot anymore.
Oh.
So we, we think that that relieved enough flow.
So the trouble areas in town.
Things that usually back up, they didn't and they normally would have. It's amazing how much that unrestricted flow is gonna help flooding.
Yes, yeah. It doesn't mean you have to get all of the woody debris out, but it needs to be a very careful balance of letting some woody habitat be there for bank stabilization and stability and habitat. But then also that unrestricted flow is very important. So that's gonna be the two priorities moving forward. Whichever funding program or whichever practices we can attempt in order to make that happen.
Thank you. Your next sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Nick Mullet. And I want to like to have the council readdress a decision that made a couple of years ago. This is in reference to ATVs, UTVs. Forty-five eleven dot two-one-five of ORC has put a procedure in place for getting permissions and requirements to bring vehicles into the city limits and run, including insurance, licensed drivers, having the vehicles inspected. I don't know about the older ones, but I can tell you the one I have got headlights, turn signals, brake lights, hazard lights, mirrors, a cab, heater, and snowplow. And I am looking to bring it in to Paulus Stone, our property here in town. And I didn't come here to upset the apple cart, but I come with some information. I checked with Kershawton Sheriff's Department. A lieutenant. I can't remember his last name at the moment. He's the guy that does the ATVs in session in Kershawton. Harwood. Harwood is his name. They've originally did the same as Millersburg Council, banned them. And then they kind of turned around and they've not had any troubles with it. You can control with permits, stickers, however you wish. But right now, the folks that are operating them have got insurance, they're licensed drivers, they pass safety inspection, and they're still subject to all the rules and laws of a highway. You're not, you're not gonna be able to speed around raising the level because if you do, it's the same with somebody in a car. They get pinched for it. I checked with Loudonville. Loudonville's been doing this for some time now with the same procedures. They require an inspection, proof of insurance, registration, I mean license plate from the license bureau. Everything has been going fine. They've licensed adult carts as well. I think this is something that wouldn't hurt. And especially if you control it with the inspections, proof of insurance, licensed driver, license plates. It's the same as any other vehicle out here on the highway. The one I have is not a race vehicle. I mean, you probably do forty-five to fifty, but you're not gonna run that into the city limits. The speed limit is either twenty-five or thirty-five respectively. The forty-five eleven dot two-one-five deals with not even allowing subdued speed vehicles on roads with excess of thirty-five mile an hour, which would mean going east on thirty-nine, you get into forty-five out there, then they'd have to be looking at it a little differently because that is not authorized by forty-five eleven. As I said, the other two communities, I have checked with them. They're not having trouble or any problems. So I think it would be worth looking at and exploring it. That brings the second and third part of this. I find it difficult when I come into town following an E-bike at thirty-five mile an hour coming into the city limits. They don't use turn signals, meaning hand signals either, making lane changes, not stopping at stop sign, blowing through intersections. Three days ago, down by Jitters, I was heading north. I watched a car turn into Jitters and stop partway up the ramp just off of eighty-three. E-bike was next and he didn't want to wait, so he got across the double yellow lines to go around and go on up into that little plaza. Well, they're supposed to be monitoring the same type of rules of the road as licensed drivers. Difference is they don't have licenses. They don't have insurance. And we don't seem to have any controls over it. But yet, right now, we can't bring a licensed vehicle in, being a UTV. It's got headlights, windshield, heater. You folks won't allow that. And something that I see almost daily when I'm at Walmart, I'm watching tractors come in. These tractors aren't being used for agricultural purposes. When you see a trailer being towed behind it with three or four people in lawn chairs or they're towing a covered trailer and they pull into Walmart and you have eight, nine, ten people come out of that covered trailer to go into Walmart, these aren't ag tractors. You're being used for public transportation. And this is not allowed by ORC. And I would imagine that they don't have any insurance either. I see this happening a lot and these are things that I think are more pressing than denying access to the highways for licensed drivers with licensed vehicles. The same requirements for driving your car is what's gonna be required for the UTVs and ATVs. And I think it would be worth revisiting this and looking into it. And my biggest suggestion to the chief of police here would be he gets the time to give the folks in Kershawton County a call and ask about the city of Kershawton, how it's going. And you love them, they'll feed you a bone and all and see how it's working for them. If there's a problem, they should. That's all I have. And I appreciate your time and just ask you to reconsider and look into this a little bit.
Thank you. Question. Who's doing the inspections for Kershawton and Loudonville?
The sheriff's department is, and you have to go to City Hall to get your sticker then. But the sheriff's department is the police department there.
Okay, is Loudonville, is their, their little?
Police department's doing this. And I can't say for sure what the fees are in both cities. One of them told me they run, they charge fifty bucks a year for the sticker. And they pro rate it, and I don't know when they do by month or by quarter or by year. You know, January one, I have no idea on the dates involved with that. You could put anything from a freebie to charging a few bucks for said sticker and inspection. I gladly have to check. Look at mine. It's got everything your car's got. Maybe not quite as good to the right, but.
Counsel have any questions?
Nick, maybe I missed it, but what was your reason for wanting to, to use the ATV? Just general transportation or did that hear of snow removal?
I'm planning on bringing it in to service my property here in town. I live down at Lake Buckhorn. And last year, when we had the hard snow and such, try to find a place to bring my truck and trailer in where I can offload my Bobcat tractor to use the front end loader and try to get the snow out. It's not a lot of time. And it would be just as easy to come up, jump on fifty-eight and come out down by McDonald's, zip up the road to my shop and take care of the snow. And at my age, trust me, the hell raising day is long gone in this transportation, take care of property. And these things aren't cheap. I had one of mine and it was still a $10,000 purchase before I put all the add-ons like a cab, a heater, and snowplow. And by the way, that heater was essential to put in there. Too old, don't like the cold anymore.
Any other questions?
I really appreciate you coming in and talking about that with us. I would, I would love to drive a UTV in this town.
And the best thing I can say and re-urge to that, babe, is it's like any other vehicle or person on the street. If you behave yourself and follow the rules, you're not gonna have any issues. But if you want to be out here and be stupid, you play stupid games, you're gonna win a stupid prize. And that means you get a citation to go to court. Or if you don't have a driver's license, that means you get the thing impounded and have to deal with all the consequences. You played a stupid game and I hear your stupid prize. That's just my humble opinion on it.
Chief, do you have any questions or comments?
I guess concern I have is people that operate them outside in the county. If we license them in Millersburg, we'll no longer be able to legally operate them in the county on any road above thirty-five miles an hour?
You will if you have the plate on it and the plate specifically, the license plate, states that you can on county and township roads.
But not once you re-register it as a UTV and license it with regular license plates?
I didn't get that from the forty-five eleven dot two-one-five. And you look at two-one, forty-five eleven, two-one-four and the next section behind it, I guess two-one-six or two-one-seven.
And as far as the Amish buggies or Amish trailers?
I didn't say a word about Amish.
It was determined that if it has a license plate on it, that it's not enforceable to stop that operation. If the trailer does.
And you have sections in ORC about riding in the trailer, I believe. That's all we've never been allowed.
I'm just telling you what the AG's office determined a few years ago.
Mike, wanna relook into that?
So if it has a license plate, it's allowed? So if you, UTV has a license plate, it should be allowed?
No, no, no. Well, yes, but then it restricts it from any road with a speed limit greater than thirty-five miles an hour.
Right. So if, if I had one here in town and I got it licensed for here in town, I, I couldn't go tooling down eighty-three with it, but I could use it in town. I'm good with that.
So under, what you're saying is since this gentleman owns a buckhorn, you have to trailer it into the corporation limits before you could drive it in town?
Or to an area that's got thirty-five mile an hour speed limit.
I'm sorry?
Or to an area that's got a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit.
I'd just like to be able to bring it up the street, get it to my shop, drive it. Instead of always having to worry about trying to trailer it in. Truck and trailer in snow, not a lot of fun. Gotta get rid of the snow before I feel comfortable bringing the trailer and the truck in. But we could look into this. The, the folks in the other townships and the county roads, nothing like red on this. Unless they say, no, you can't, you can specifically. That's what I took on the sections when I was looking into it. That's what I got from when I talked to the folks in the other cities that as long as you have the sticker in here, when you come into the city limits, you're fine. That's not the license plate. That's just the sticker from the city. I have, mine's already licensed with a plate on it. And that doesn't mean that I can come into the city limits in Millersburg until you guys say it's okay. The only way I can try to go around that is a small loophole of utility vehicle service in the property, and I really don't want to go down that road. I'd rather do this straight up front, above board and have respect for it.
Appreciate that.
Counsel wanted to address it. Of course, not, tonight's not the night, of course. So we want, want to do a little more research on it or not?
I think, yeah, absolutely.
I can, I can tell you that we've been through this. The, the laws are very confusing and that's why I'm not saying anything because without reviewing that file, which is that thick, I don't want to render a legal opinion on it. I know Mr. Mullet has his legal opinion. I may or may not agree with it unless they've changed the law. I probably don't agree with it. So it's, but if you, if you want me to research it and come back and report to you, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Did it sound like?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think the last section that I saw of a date was in seventeen on this forty-five eleven dot two-one-five. If I'm not mistaken. And you're, you're right, there's a lot of contradiction in looking at it. Okay, well, here it says this, but over here it says that. And I was looking at Loudonville and Kershawton. They've got the guidelines in place and it's working for those folks. So that's what I would encourage to look into. I'm not here to demand an answer. I'd just like to have you open up the topic and take another look at it and see if there's any ground for change in your position on it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next visitor?
Do I need to look up the state?
It'd be very helpful, yes.
My name is Mike Gerber and I'm just here for a compliment. I'm gonna compliment the village. This past summer, the windstorm did a number on my buckeye tree and I think I had one of three in town. And it lost limbs and it was a sorry looking thing. And Brent Schrock, the arborist from Holmes Wing, like it came and we talked about it. What a nice guy. And he said, you know, he said, I think we can get the village to take this tree out for nothing and we'll just take care of it. He said, no, you want to be patient because we talked about it in the summer. And, and so they finally came. It was, I think Herschberger Create Service came, two Amish men. And they did everything safely. They put the fence up, didn't have to stop traffic. And they were just very cordial gentlemen. And they checked list the homeowner next week. They had to get apart their equipment there, no problem. And they were done, oh, early afternoon. Well, then the village came. The next week, he said, how about we take this wood out for you? Unless you have, you know, someone that wants it. No. Well, Herschberger has it already stacked up, looked beautiful. So the next week, the street department came and they came and took care of it in twenty minutes. It was gone. And the week after that, well, they came and ground out the stuff. But it was done like clockwork. Everything was, it was done almost like it was orchestrated. And I appreciated that because you've got good, good guys working for it, for what they do. And they were, they were happy and, you know, not, you know, doing this grudgingly. They did it happily and, and they worked fast and, and I was real glad. So I'm just thanking the, the village for taking care of my old buckeye tree.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And just one thing. I bought that house. I'm right between Village Motors and Victorian House. And I bought it in nineteen seventy-seven. And that's a house I used to play in in the late fifties and early sixties. And there was a family there by the name of Applehole. And they had kids that were about the same ages as my, my family. And I remember me and the youngest one, we would go up to the third floor and there was a little piece of wood that had an awl in it. You can take that out, put valuables in there. Soon as I bought that, I ran up there to the third floor and looked in there, it was monopoly money.
Thank you very much for that story.
Would you be interested in a new tree at some point?
Yeah.
We're all, the Tree City Board's always looking for places to plant trees in the street right away.
Yeah, just like a short ornament or something like that.
We'd be open to.
Yeah.
If you want to think about it, let us know.
Yeah, I don't need like a giant sequoia or anything.
Sure.
Get a good taste of the size, sure.
Okay.
All right. Moving on. Shall we have a motion to suspend the reading in minutes?
Second. Poland. Hafi.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Any issues or corrections? We have motion to pass. Shall move.
Second. Khan.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Thank you. Bill Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-eight. Are there any questions on the bills this evening? You have a motion to pay the bills.
So moved. Second. Khan.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
Thank you. Chief. Thank you.
All right. We didn't have any submittals for the Design Review Board or Planning and Zoning Commission for December, but we did receive Mike McDowell's resignation from the Design Review Board, effective January first of next year. Where, as you know, we're in the process of revising the design review ordinance and guidelines. And one of the things that we're talking about, that's currently a seven-member board, five, well, five members and two alternates. We're talking about whether we'd be better off going five members or keeping it at seven. So I don't know that we want to rush to reappoint somebody. If there's a chance, we don't have five full members, or seven, I'm sorry. I said that wrong. So we'll be, we're hoping the, the revisions will be in January is what our expected timeframe is to have it to Design Review Board and you guys for that decision. And then depending how that goes, then we could advertise for the opening.
Well, I believe we're having another one.
Yes.
In January first, so that would leave us with five current. So if we do five, then we're already there.
Yeah, that might take care of itself. I'm not, I'm not opposed to seven members, but five is something that's been discussed. The ODOT TAP project, we're waiting on District Eleven's Real Estate Department to give their final okay on all the right-of-way certifications. Once we get that done, I have a letter prepared to submit to them saying that we've got utility and right-of-way all locked down and certified and then can proceed to the next steps, which would be utility relocations. AEP, the gas company and our water, we have a couple hydrants to move. But that's all lined up, ready to roll. The ARPA project, the storm sewer replacement, I just received plans this afternoon. What we're looking at is phasing that. I think we talked about that previously. I want to get updated estimates on that. Assuming I don't have many major revisions on those design plans, they can get bid documents prepared fairly soon and then we'll get that out to bid. Hopefully, at least be able to get the first phase done, which would be from the creek heading east. The second phase would be from where that stops going north to hopefully eliminate that issue we're having there. Nothing new on the demolition project. I did receive the, the certificates of title. The title searches that were done back when we acquired the properties the county asked for. I didn't have them, so I got ahold of Miller Mast Mason. They, they did have them and provided them to us. That won't hold up. The, the county won't have to do a title search now that we have those. So should be able to keep those moving. We're, we're down to just bag leaf collection. Obviously, at this point, leaves are pretty much all gone, but there are still some bag leaves coming. Obviously, at this point, leaves are pretty much all gone, but there are still some bag leaves coming in. We'll continue to do that off and on until the snow flies, probably.
Is there a day that that's, that they pick them up? Or is they just?
During, yeah, during the, when we're out with the machine, Friday is bag leaf collection. But if they're out at any time now, now that we aren't running the machine around, we'll, we'll pick them up whenever. The Appalachian Community Grant, where you've got legislation before you tonight to have Omega as the lead applicant for all of the various entities that are participating in this. We had another meeting today, actually. Working on gathering all these resolutions, letters of support from public and private entities that have anything to do with any of the projects. There's currently eleven projects listed throughout Holmes County. It's, it's a pretty overwhelming process, to be honest, trying to get everything in one place. And I'm glad Omega's taken the lead on it. They're equipped to do that, we're not. I believe that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Karen? Thank you, Bob?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to appoint Brent Schrock to the Tree City Board.
Second.
Cohen?
Aye.
Hofstetter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Hafi?
Aye.
Thank you. Onto legislation. Third reading, Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-five by title only. A resolution authorizing the transfer of sums from the General Fund to the Street Maintenance and Repair Fund to the Cemetery Operating Fund to the Police Disability and Pension Fund into the Sidewalk Replacement Fund. Are there any questions? May we have a motion to pass?
So moved.
Second. Vaughn?
Aye.
Hafi?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Hofstetter?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash one oh three by title only. An ordinance amending sewer ordinance, chapter nine twenty-nine, to eliminate the debt service charge. Are there any questions? May we have a motion to suspend the third reading?
Second, Khan.
Cohen?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Hofstetter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hafi?
Aye.
May we have a motion to pass?
I so moved.
Second.
Hafi?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Hofstetter?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Thank you. First reading ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash one oh five by title only. An ordinance vacating street known as Mayor's Avenue in the village of Millersburg. Are there any questions? First reading ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash one oh six by title only. An ordinance amending sewer ordinance, chapter nine twenty-nine, to add a capital improvement fee. Are there any questions? Emergency resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-nine by title only. A resolution authorizing the Ohio Mid Eastern Governments Association, Omega, to serve as the lead technical assistance grant applicant for the Appalachian Community Grant Program in Holmes County and declaring emergency. Are there any questions? May we have a motion to suspend the second, third reading?
So moved. Second. Cohen?
Aye.
Hafi?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hofstetter?
Aye.
May we have a motion to pass?
So moved.
Second.
Hofstetter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hafi?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Thank you. First reading Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash thirty by title only. A resolution to amend the Millersburg Personnel Policy Regarding Medical Marijuana. Are there any questions?
I'm curious what prompted this.
Well, it's a good question. We, medical marijuana has been legal in Ohio since two thousand sixteen. Our policy does not address the issue of medical marijuana. So, and Matt brought this to my attention. And so I thought, well, we really should have something in the personnel policy about medical marijuana, because a lot of people would think, well, you know, I'm legally taking medical marijuana, so therefore, there can't be a policy against it. And that could be true. I mean, it's up to you folks if you want to allow that to happen, if you want people with a card to be able to, to use medical marijuana. I doubted whether you wanted that, maybe I was wrong about that. But I then contacted Clemens Nelson Associates, who are the ones that do our personnel policy, and asked them to provide me with a model policy that, that other communities have used. And they did that. I changed it somewhat, and that's what you have for you.
And have any of the similar municipalities wording, have they been legally challenged or anything? Has there been any?
No, not, not as far as restricting it, no. Because the, the law specifically, the Ohio law specifically states that all employers can restrict the use of medical marijuana. Not, not just the village or any municipality, but any employer in the state of Ohio.
It was well worded.
Yeah, it was.
It was easy to understand, it wasn't well worded.
I, you know, because I'm, you're writing this for employees, and so they need to understand it.
All right, any other questions? Any committee reports? Old business? New business?
There's a light at two northern, a street light that's out. They're going out everywhere.
Street lights.
Yeah, they're going out everywhere.
And Nate, there is one right on the side of Miller's Creamery as well, but I don't know if that pole has a tag on it.
Okay.
That it's, it's just on the plain black pole.
Yeah, okay.
Just saw that way, walking up here tonight.
I'd actually like to remove that light, move it to another pole and get that black pole out of there at some point.
That would be nice, because that really pinches in the sidewalk right there.
And maybe we can just find the side of the building?
Might be able to.
Any other new business? If not, may we have a motion to go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employee who are official?
Second.
Cohen?
Aye.
Hofstetter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Hafi?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone have a good evening.